Good evening, everyone, to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for June 11, 2024. The first thing to call to the order to the meeting, and we are calling to the order at 7:32, and second, please stand after the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Next is roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Dancler Jr. is absent with excuse. Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Baffedari.
Here.
Alder Wheeler is absent with excuse. You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So, before we move, item four, public appearance for non-agenda item and new appointments, we have two proclamations. We are going to start with June as a pride month, so proclaiming June as a pride month in the city of Fitchburg. Whereas the city of Fitchburg recognized the importance of equality and freedom for all the residents and values the diversity of our community, including our LGBTQ+ residents, who contribute significantly to the cultural, civic, and economic vibrances of our city, and...
Whereas June was chosen as National Pride Month to commemorate the 1969 protests and demonstrations in response to raids at the Stonewall Inn in New York's Greenwich Village, and...
Whereas June has become a symbolic month in which the LGBTQ+ community and allies come together in various celebrations of pride, and...
Whereas the city of Fitchburg is committed to fostering an inclusive and welcoming environment that supports the dignity and rights of all its residents regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, and...
Whereas many of the residents and business owners within the city of Fitchburg who contribute to the enrichment of our city are a part of the LGBTQ+ community, and...
Whereas Fitchburg is strengthened by the diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents and business community members, all of which contribute to the character, talent, economy, and leadership of our city, and...
Whereas while critical steps have been made toward full LGBTQ+ equity and equality, members of our national, state, and local communities still face discrimination, exclusion, and prejudice simply for being who they are and for whom they love, and...
Whereas... Whereas discrimination against people from the LGBTQ+ community around the world makes it imperative for cities like Fitchburg to stand up and show support for our LGBTQ+ residents, and continue to advocate and educate our residents to combat prejudice and to promote understanding, acceptance, and respect, and...
Whereas each of us can and should promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, support all fellow community members, prevent the spread of misinformation, and reject hate and bias in all its forms, which will make Fitchburg a stronger and healthier community, and...
Now, therefore, it is resolved that I, Julia Ratafratta, Mayor of the city of Fitchburg, along with the Common Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and encourage all residents to actively promote, support, and help build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. This is proclaimed this 11th day of June 2024. Okay, so now I invite the council to take a picture. We don't have anyone from the community with this, no.
(inaudible)
Look at the flags. See, I want one of those, okay.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Everybody, stand together.
Hey, everybody, look at me. I know, not much to see here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start with the second one.
Oh, Gabriela, we'll start with the flag.
Oh, white flag, yes.
Ah, we need to go.
We're doing late. Okay, so this one for you. Okay, so we start with the second one. Proclaiming June 19, 2024 as Juneteenth Celebration Day. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day, Freedom Day, and Jubilee Day, marks the historical date of the end of slavery in the United States, and...
Whereas when Union Army General Gordon Granger landed at the Texas port city of Galveston in 1865 as the Civil War drew to a close, one of his first actions was to read General Order Number Three, which stated that all slaves are free and their former masters and slaves have absolute equality of personal and property rights, and...
Whereas following his statement, June 19th, Juneteenth, became the emancipation date of those long suffering for freedom, and...
Whereas since then, as the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in America, the tradition of celebrating Juneteenth has remained strong well into the 21st century to recognize the triumph of the human spirit over the cruelty of slavery and to honor the strength, endurance, and faith of African-American ancestors, and...
Whereas the observance of Juneteenth is an opportunity for the residents of Fitchburg to recognize and honor the rich cultural heritage, achievements, and contributions of African-Americans to our city, state, and nations, and...
Whereas it is imperative that citizens in Fitchburg and across our state continue to work towards a more just Wisconsin and join together to acknowledge a time in our history that carried on the nation's ideals of equality and democracy, and celebrate the joys of liberty and justice for every American citizen.
Now, therefore, it is resolved that I, Julia, I, Mayor Julia Ratafratta, along with the Fitchburg Common Council, do hereby recognize June 19, 2024 as Juneteenth Celebration Day in the city of Fitchburg, and remind individuals of the importance of this day and celebrate African-American history and culture while continuing to promote diversity, equality, and a strong sense of community in our city and state. Let us come together to honor the enduring spirit of freedom and the continued pursuit of equality and justice for all. This is proclaimed this June day of, this 11th day of June 2024. So, okay, so we are taking the picture. I invite the council. So this is for you. This is this.
We should have another picture.
But we are going to take another one. We're going to take another.
You want to have my...
Is this Juneteenth?
Oh, happy Juneteenth. Okay, all right.
Now, how come you got a flag and I didn't get one?
I just...
So, I don't know.
I don't know. I'm okay.
Do you want to say some words?
Oh, that's fine. Yep.
Now?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm...
No, I'm just very happy to see that the city is now starting to recognize the diversity of our residents and our communities here, and that we are taking time to acknowledge the culturally relevant programs and events and dates that's absolutely important to all of us. At the end of the day, it's going to take all of us to move this city forward. So, thank you for doing what you do, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ditto. Congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else? No?
Thank you.
Okay, so we are ready for the meeting.
Everybody, get together.
Wait, 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 wait.
Thank you.
Should we do one just like it with the pride flag?
Thank you.
If you're talking over your shoulder...
Oh, here, I have one here.
Okay.
To Kate and Erin. Okay, so Kate, do you want to say some words about the proclamation, the pride proclamation? Can you come to the microphone?
Hello, my name is Kate Miller, and I am a proud resident of Fitchburg, and I am also the very proud wife of Erin Anderson over here. And I would just like, I think this is perfect for this story, rather than talk about, you know, my path coming out, I thought that I would take a moment to share with you something that my mom shared with me, who is quite possibly the most wonderful person that will have ever walked this planet, about acceptance. And I think this bodes well with both the proclamations today. So, if you will all just play along with me, when I was young, couldn't have been more than five, my mom sat me down and said, Katie, I want you to close your eyes. So, play along with me. Everybody, close your eyes. I'm looking, okay? And I want you to picture a flower garden where it is all of the exact same flowers, and all of those flowers are white. Take a moment, picture it in your mind. Now, I want you to take a moment and change that flower garden. And that flower garden is filled with flowers of every shape and size and color. Really picture it. And then open your eyes and think about which flower garden you would like to be surrounded by. That is diversity. That is the most simplistic way of showing how the world is better when you are surrounded by different shapes and colors and sizes. And I, it's something that I took with me my entire life, and in October of last year, when my mom passed away, before she left this earth, she reminded me of this lesson. And it was almost like it was something that she wanted me to pass along. And so I give this gift to you, and I hope that it's something that you will keep in mind as you continue to lead this community that I love and that I feel accepted in, and take it with you wherever you go. So, there you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Okay, I'm going to give you the proclamation.
All the flowers should come out here. All the flowers, all the...
are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Thank you for hearing me tonight, Madam Mayor and members of the Common Council.
She handed us a picture.
All flowers should come out here. All the flowers, all the...
I understand that the reason I am here tonight is going to be put on hold, but I wanted
Right next to this is shorter.
to make a statement anyway. I sent my full statement to the city clerk today, so that is there with her in writing in a Word document. I'm an anthropologist and I'm a linguist out of UW Madison. I spent 50 years concerned and working as a scholar and an activist on the Palestinian question. I have studied the history of the region. I've studied Arabic and Hebrew and French, trying to learn and understand the people of the region and their history, and approach it from the way they would think about it and process it with their language. And I also had the honor of being mentored by Joseph Elder at Sociology at UW in Gandhi nonviolence, in pacifism. So, I'm here tonight to speak to that. This resolution, Resolution R. 123-24, calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza, has served to bring me comfort knowing that I am not the only one in the city to have concern and to support a ceasefire. I've been horrified and shocked at the brutal violence exhibited by the parties, but in particular, I've been gravely concerned and disillusioned with Israel at the asymmetric engagement shown by the Netanyahu administration. I've mourned the loss of so many lives because so many of them were children and noncombatants. I've been horrified at the destruction, the wounded, the direct attacks against journalists, the hospitals, aid workers, UN aides, and agencies like the World Food Kitchen, who've had people give their lives in the attempt to bring food and aid to the people under fire. When our government entered to support the Netanyahu administration, I felt I had to decry the acts of both governments, putting the innocent blood of these Gazans and Israelis on our hands, as well as Netanyahu's and those of Hamas. I am horrified that we, as the people of the United States, now hold some responsibility for such carnage and death. I'm hoping the carnage will end. I don't believe it can continue. After such asymmetric violence, I would like to see the government of Israel, Hamas, and our government work to end the conflict, bring a ceasefire into effect, and release all of the hostages that are held. I believe the people of our country are required to stand up and say no more, and that Gaza may never recover. I believe their society is already destroyed, and that we, as citizens of the U.S., have a responsibility to add our voices to those from around the world saying, stop. I heartily approve of the resolution. I heartily thank the ones who brought this resolution forward in Fitchburg. I hope that the Common Council will approve it when you bring it up on the table. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so next, we are in item five. There is the approval of the consent agenda.
Who of approval?
Second. Moved by Allen, second by Gerhart. Okay, any question, comments?
I have a procedural question. When we issue liquor licenses, is there ever any consideration for dispute or violence or police calls made to a specific location and the interaction of that liquor license on those number of calls?
Yes, I don't want to necessarily speak for the police department on this particular matter, but having a bit of experience in that realm, yes, we would always do a check of what the call for service history has been whenever licenses come up for renewal, both for the business and/or the particular server licenses as well. And even during, and I know in talking with Chief Morales in regards to perhaps one of the applicants this evening, they've had ongoing conversations with that particular business owner and have generally received a positive response to those conversations, so...
Have there been, sorry, Jay, just to follow up to that, are there stipulations put on, that's so encouraging to hear, that the business owner is very engaged with law enforcement, that makes me super happy, and I appreciate that. Is there a, any stipulations put on the fact that, like, if these levels continue, or if we continue to get some of those calls, that the liquor license can be removed before the annual renewal, or is that something that normally happens just annually?
Yeah, so the city does have a process outlined in its ordinances that identifies, you know, if there are certain violations, there's a point system associated with those. So, if a certain number of points are hit in a certain period of time, then the city could move to potentially revoke or suspend an alcohol license.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jay, yes?
Yeah, just in my experience, in the years that I've been serving, we have revoked two alcohol licenses, and we had another business where we reduced their hours of operation. So, we do take these things seriously, and we take action when, you know, the question is, what's an adequate number of calls to, you know, where's the bar? So, I think that's what we're going to probably be dealing with in that particular location moving forward.
Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, the consent agenda is approved. So, next, we move to the administrator report.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start off with a number of events that are coming up. I'll try to go in chronological order. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 12, at 4:00 p.m., is the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the Irish Fields Apartment Community. That's located just off of Nobel Drive to the south here of City Hall in the Highfield Reserve Development. There will be a resource fair in Southdale Park on Thursday, June 13, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. There'll be free bag dinners from Munch Mobile Meals Truck. You'll also be able to learn about free resources and services from several local agencies and participate in a variety of fun outdoor summer activities. The New Bridal Shop, located in the Terrace Point Building on Fitchatory Road at Traceway Drive, Bon Bon Bell Bridal Boutique, is celebrating their grand opening and ribbon cutting on Friday, June 14, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. On Monday, June 17, there'll be a community workshop and picnic in regards to the teen center feasibility study. Again, that's Monday, June 17, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Wisconsin Latino Chamber of Commerce, located at 5262 Anton Drive. We also have fitness equipment. We've been referring to it as the Ninja Fitness Equipment that was donated by Inventure Capital that was recently installed at McKee Farms Park. There will be a vent cutting the ribbon for that particular fitness equipment on June 27 at 3:30 p.m. Upcoming road closure, I want everybody to be aware of, there'll be some streetlight installation at the intersection of Seminole Highway and Lacy Road, so that roundabout will be closed June 18 and 19. As you came in, you saw that the front counter remodel project is continuing with the plastic and perhaps a few pieces of dust and debris, and a desk sitting in the hall where Tracy and her team have been greeting visitors to City Hall. That project is on schedule, I'm pleased to report that, and we're anticipating within the next couple of weeks that will hopefully be wrapped up. The library is currently working with our parks maintenance staff on the installation of a story walk at McKee Farms Park. The concrete pads have been poured for that particular item, and we hope to have the storyboards installed soon. And Buffalo Fluffalo will be the story that will be installed. Buffalo Fluffalo. I hear, according to our library director, that that book is quite good. There are a number of city staff who recently put together a communications landing page on the city's website. That page is available where folks can go to one particular page to see the myriad of ways in which the city attempts to do communication outreach, things such as signing up for notify me services, social media links, Fact TV links, and other items are all located there. And in order to find that, if you simply go to the city webpage, go under Services tab, it's in the upper left-hand corner where it says Communications. And I certainly want to thank the staff members who are involved in coordinating that and putting all of those items in one particular location. And then finally, I'm pleased to report that the housing specialist position that was funded by the Common Council in the 2024 operating budget position has been filled, and the person filling that role will begin service to the city on July 22. And so I have, any questions?
Can you tell us any update for the tennis court? Do you have any update?
The last update that I have is the particular surface called Pro Bounce. The installers are, a limited number of those installers in the country, in that they've been currently tied up on the East Coast due to some weather. So, they will be here as soon as possible, and we'll look to get that court back in service since we're already into June here.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, any other question for Chad?
No.
Okay, thank you, Chad. So, next, we move to commission and committee reports, and we plan commission, Gabriela, we...
I'd like to actually make a motion, if I may, Madam Mayor, to amend the agenda regarding item 10A2, Resolution 123-24.
Okay. What do you want to do?
Second.
Do I have to get a second?
Well, you have to.
I have to move to bring it next.
You have to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Oh, that's what I thought I did.
Oh.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to bring it next.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor to moving the resolution R. 123-24 after the city administrator report, say aye.
Aye.
Can you pause? The motion carries. Okay, so what are you planning to do with this?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to our next Common Council meeting, which occurs on June 25.
Second.
Any question, comment about this? No? Okay, all those in favor of postponing the Resolution R. 123-24 to the June 25 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
In your polls, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so now we are back to plan commission.
Only statement, next, we are meeting again next Tuesday, June 18, at 6:30 p.m., as normal.
Thank you. So, next, we move to the Board of Public Works, and we have several. Okay.
I'll move approval of Resolution R. 9024, accepting intergovernmental agreement between the city of Fitchburg and the town of Verona for cost share of design services for Goose Lake-Fitchrona Road stormwater improvements. The Board of Public Works approves, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Oh, second?
Gabriela.
Okay. Did the Resource Conservation Commission approve?
Yes, we did.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this, Dave?
So, I think you're all aware of the flooding issues we've had on Fitchrona Road, and a lot of it is traced to a capacity issue with Goose Lake. The water goes in there, and not enough can get out to keep the road from flooding. So, this is, this is an agreement between us and the town of Madison to change the outlet to allow more water to get out to keep it at a constant level. There is a cost sharing of this, and it is, it's based on the area. So, we are paying 75% of this. Town of Verona is paying 25, and it's based on the area of the watershed that's feeding in there.
Any question, comment? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R. 123-24... been currently tied up on the East Coast due to some weather. So they will be here as soon as possible and we'll look to get that court back in service since we're already into June here.
It's three weeks away.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, any other question for Chad?
No.
Okay, thank you Chad. So next we move to commission and committee reports and we plan commission, Gabriela, we.
I'd like to actually make a motion, if I may, Madam Mayor, to amend the agenda regarding item 10A2, Resolution 123-24.
Okay. What do you want to do?
Second.
Do I have to get a second?
Well, you have to.
I have to move to bring it next.
You have to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Oh, that's what I thought I did.
Oh.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to bring it next.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor to moving the, the resolution R-123-24 after the city administrator's report, say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? The motion carries. Okay, so what are you planning to do with this?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to our next Common Council meeting, which occurs on June 25th.
Second.
Any question, comment about this? No? Okay, all those in favor of postponing the resolution R-123-24 to the June 25th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And you post, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so now we are back to plan commission.
Only statement next, we are meeting again next Tuesday, June 18th at 6:30 PM as normal.
Thank you. So next we move to the Board of Public Works and we have, oh, several, okay.
I'll move approval of Resolution R-9024, accepting intergovernmental agreement between the City of Fitchburg and the Town of Verona for cost share of design services for Goose Lake, Fitch, Verona Road, stormwater improvements. The Board of Public Works approved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Oh, second?
Gabriela.
Okay. Did the Resource Conservation Commission approve?
Yes, we did.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance's approved.
Okay, what is this, Dave?
So I think you're all aware of the flooding, flooding issues we've had on Fitch, Verona Road and a lot of it is traced to a capacity issue with Goose Lake. The water goes in there and not enough can get out to keep the road from flooding. So this is, this is an agreement between us and the Town of Madison to change the outlet to allow more water to get out to keep it at a constant level. There is a cost sharing of this and it is, it's based on the area. So we are paying 75% of this, Town of, Town of Verona is paying 25 and it's based on the area of the watershed that's, that's feeding in there.
Any question, comment? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-90-24, say aye.
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 And you post, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R-9124, approving agreement for engineering services with Rookert, Mica Incorporated for Goose Lake, Fitch, Verona Road, stormwater improvements.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Did RCC approve?
RCC approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this?
So we are, here's the services and we're hiring a consultant to do this, to do this design and that's what this is.
Okay, we need simple, simple majority for this, so, okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-91-24, say aye.
Aye.
And you post, the motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R-124, amendment to the final assessment amounts for the 2023 sidewalk replacement.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this?
There was one section of sidewalk that the resident was assessed for. It was determined that, you know, a tree caused that, that section and it should have been, it was not a 50/50 share that would, would have been deemed the city would pay for that and there was an error on the assessment report, this, this corrects that.
Okay, any comments, question? All those in favor of Resolution R-100-24, say aye.
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 And you post, the motion carries. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R-124, authorizing acceptance of the 2024 surface maintenance bid.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay.
So this covers our, you know, our maintenance on our streets from crack filling to chip seal. And also add that we, the amendment includes transferring, I think it's 350 or 375,000 from the street resurfacing account into this because there was ARPA money in the other, in the street resurfacing. So it was available, available for this and I believe this is a $1.3 million contract. I don't know if Tim is still on, I think that was the amount. And it's a firm we, we've used a little bit in the city, but they were checked and they had, they had good references, so.
Tim, do you want to add anything else to this?
Yeah, the contract's for $1,177,989 and that includes a 10% contingency.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, question? Oh, Jay?
Yeah, I noticed there's a, about $73,000 for, or about $37,000 for removing pavement markings. What is that all about? Cause there's not really anything specific here. Just says, you know, bike with arrow symbol removal.
Tim, I'm gonna throw that one to you.
Yeah. Yeah, when the existing road is chip sealed, the, the new striping's gonna have to go down. And then also we remove the existing striping prior to putting the chip seal down so the chip seal adheres to the existing pavement surface.
I see. Got it.
Okay, we need two thirds of the vote, so I will do roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Hi.
Dancer Jr. is absent. Alder Gerhardt?
Hi.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Baffodari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler is absent. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R-10324, approving engineering services for Wayland Road paved shoulders.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Thank you. What is this?
I believe you're aware of the, passed in the, in the ARPA or SIP last year, plans to add paved shoulders on, on Wayland, so it is complete and this is approving the engineering services for that work. I would add that at our meeting, I'm not, we were asked if there was any additional right of way required for this and there was not.
Okay. Okay, so any questions? All those in favor of Resolution R-103-24, say aye.
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 And you post, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R-11124, conditionally approving a holding tank permit for 2224 County Highway MM.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Okay, what is this?
So this is a site where their, their septic field has failed and so another option is not available, so they have the option of getting a holding tank, a permit for a holding tank and that is what we are, that's what we are approving here. Holding, as you know, a holding tank has to be pumped, you know, there's no drain field, they have, however large the capacity is, they have to come in and, and pump it, so if they had a better option, I think they would use it, but we have this in our ordinance for this specific situation.
Okay, any question, comment, Jay?
Yeah, the only comment I would have on that is on the application, there's a box, there's, there's six boxes on there that you're supposed to check to show that you've submitted the right forms. There's a box that says letter from Dane County stating that they have reviewed the conditions of the site and that no other septic system will conform with requirements. And that box is not checked. However, the letter stating that is in the, with the application, so that might just be a little confusing, so I don't know if we can make sure that that box is checked because I'm sure we keep this application on file.
Tim, could you make that happen or amend that form?
Yes, we can note that in our file.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Jay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that was brought up at our Public Works meeting as well.
Okay, so any other comment, question? Here none. All those in favor of Resolution R-111-24, say aye.
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 And you post, the motion carries. Okay, we are done. Isn't it?
Parks Commission?
Okay, so now we move to Park Commission.
So just, just a couple of updates. The Stone Prairie Park, they went out for bids and they came in, they came in above, so we are rebidding it. Scott thought it was, you know, that we have a shelter and then we have a playground and usually a place has a specialty and, and one or the other and if the specialty in building, the building, they subcontract the, the playground part, then they have to have a markup on that and Scott, Scott has some bidding options, so we, we will rebid that. I think you're aware, the, the bids for the hub went out and we had a successful bidder on, on that and we discussed uptown possible park or survey that we're going to send out to the residents there. And we also discussed possible creation of a, of a parks, a city park fund, 501 3B, getting that established and so that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Library Board, Jim is not here. Commission on Aging Well, Donald is not here. RCC?
Yes, we met yesterday and we had a presentation from Sustained Dane about food waste collection options, so that may be coming in the future. We discussed the Goose Lake, Fitch, Verona Road stormwater situation as well as the Greenway Cross stormwater improvements, which are, I guess, should be finished up later this And a reminder that tomorrow night at the library at 6 o'clock, you can see an educational presentation on electric vehicles.
What time, 6?
6:00 PM to 7:30, yeah.
Who is organizing the library or RCC?
This is, well, sponsored by, in coalition with the library, I guess, right?
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Okay, so we move to TTC.
We will meet on Thursday.
And you have an ordinance?
Oh, yes, that is true. I will move approval of Ordinance 2024-0-11, amending the composition of the Transportation and Transit Commission by amending Fitchburg Ordinance, Section 6-379A and 6-556 and repeating Section 668-8G.
Second.
Okay, so did transport, which one we are approving? You're, TTC approved the original, okay? And then we have, okay, you approved the original.
Correct. Board of Public Works approved with an amendment.
Okay. And then which are, which are those amendments?
Well, TTC approved the original, the Bicycle Commission and the Board of Public Works approved the same amendment, so maybe we'll start with that.
We start with the, the original, okay?
With the original, okay?
Yes. Isn't it?
Well, that's what he's, I want to clarify, that's what you've moved to the floor, right? As, as presented originally?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Okay, can you explain what it is?
Yes, the, the TTC has historically had appointed to its membership one member of the Board of Public Works and we've had a very difficult time trying to get somebody from the Board of Public Works to find the extra time to, to sit in on, on TTC meetings. And so we proposed this change in composition so that instead of it, a Public Works member, we would have a member from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission since they deal with transportation issues as well. So that is the meat of this change, basically leaving, leaving the majority of the TTC amendment alone, just basically striking out Board of Public Works member with, and replacing it with Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission member.
Okay. Any comment, a question for the other members? Other committees, no?
I have a quick question. So does that mean, like, I know Ross is involved quite a bit with that committee or commission, does that mean someone like him won't be on it going forward?
Ross is our staff contact, he will always be there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
And that was, that was a point of discussion.
Good.
Because our, because the staff contact will always be a, a member of Public Works, there will always be that information, you know, presented to TTC. Yeah, so then the, the question is, what other expertise do we want to bring on board?
Okay, so we have on the table the ordinance as originally, you know, referred, okay? So all those in favor of?
Before we do that, what did Public Works do with this?
Right.
No one has said anything yet, so.
So the, the change recommended by the Board of Public Works is that rather than having somebody from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission sit on TTC, we have just a member of the public sit on TTC.
Okay.
And the idea there being that we would have one more voice rather than hearing the same voice multiple times and there may also be difficulty in finding somebody who's, you know, from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, who can find the time to sit in on another meeting every month.
What about the Bicycle Committee? Or is Joe, or is Joe?
Are you asking for updates, Mayor?
Yes.
So we find, we had our first meeting on June 4th as the Bicycle and Pedestrian.
No, no, I am asking about this resolution, this ordinance.
Oh, specifically?
Yeah, because it was, it was also approved, approved with amendment, so what, what is that one? Do you remember?
I think Alder Jetser said that it was the same as Board of Public Works.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we pretty much, yeah.
Okay, so what we have on the table is?
And I can summarize, just with the, I put up both of the amended language here that was done by both Board of Public Works and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
Okay.
And then that would basically amend this four to five and remove this last sentence, one citizen member appointed by the Bike and Ped, Ped Commission. And then the other portion that would be amended is this last sentence here, that would be removed through this amendment.
But no one put an amendment on the table yet?
Correct.
I have a question though, I, I guess I'm confused, I don't rem, I did not hear the Bike Committee's conversation about this, but does the Bike Committee oppose having one of their members sit on TTC? I guess I'm confused why they wouldn't want a rep on TTC.
I personally voted for that proposition, but I think what ultimately the committee decided is they don't want this and necessarily have that burden on somebody to be able to serve on multiple committees if, if we're unable to do that.
Okay, so, so what we have on the floor right now is the originally referred to commission, so is someone want to amend to one of, we need, I don't know, otherwise I'm gonna call the vote.
For the purposes of discussion, I will move the, the amended language as per the Board of Public Works and Bicycle Commission.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so all of those, any discussion? No one to discuss, okay, good. Okay, Jay.
Well, I'm, I mean, this, the discussion so far has been a little haphazard, so I have, I don't know, I, I still do not know from this conversation what the Bicycle Commission actually wants. I mean, is there a member who would be willing to serve in this role? And what, I mean, I, I don't really care one way or the other, but I don't want to ride an ordinance, I don't want to put something in the ordinance that we can't fulfill. So, you know, either we're gonna have somebody from the Bicycle Commission on the Transportation and Transit Commission, or we're going to have the mayor find another person to serve in a vacant spot. So.
Find you.
Yeah, so I, I mean, give us some guidance here, please.
I think that for what I am seeing is.
You're asking for my own guidance or from, or for me to interpret what the Bicycle Committee said?
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, I think they just, they just didn't want that burden or that requirement if, if it was unable to be fulfilled. I'm not sure if you'd like to review the meeting, the meeting video, but that's, that's, that sums up what they said.
How big is that committee? I have no idea how many people are on it.
Seven.
Seven, okay. Thanks.
But that committee currently has a vacancy?
No, the TTC.
Well, TTC does, yes.
Okay, the Bicycle and Ped Commission is full?
Yes.
Okay. If I may, I suppose what could happen obviously is if there was a, if the council elected to approve the ordinance as amended by Board of Public Works and Bike Committee, I don't see anything that would be prohibiting the mayor from recommending one of the five citizen members to potentially be a member of the Bike and Pedestrian Commission if there was one able and willing to serve. There would be nothing that would prohibit that, so you could still potentially have a member of that commission on TTC if they're able to commit that time.
Likewise, there was a Board of Public Works member that, that, you know, and I would just like to tell you on our Board of Public Works, one of our members is, is she's in recovery or doing well from, from cancers. The other, the other works full-time, he just can't, he doesn't have time. And our third, he's having to take care of his, his grandchild because of some family situations. So, you know, it's not that, in the past, we've been able to fill it, it's, it's, as currently constituted, but I do have, Madam Mayor, I have a couple of people that are interested in that, so I'll, I'll have, I'll forward their, I'll get them to send you an application if that sounds all right.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, so I, and I appreciate that the BPW couldn't find someone regularly because you meet twice a month, so it's already kind of like a lot of meetings and adding another on top of it is, I, I understand why it was hard to get a member to, to be on TTC. I guess I'm disappointed to hear that the Bike and Ped Committee doesn't really want this connection because we talked about it in Transportation and Transit and there are so many elements of pedestrian and bikes that we talk about in TTC. You know, it's, it's a part of our transit network and so we inevitably have those conversations. And so we thought it was important to have that collaboration between the committees because we are working towards similar issues, but we're not. because we are working towards similar issues, but we're not having direct conversations. Aside, we have indirect conversations through council, but that's, that's not a great moment for collaboration. So I guess I'm just disappointed to hear that they don't want that power, but I'm the person that serves from PLAN on TTC, so I don't know, maybe I'm the wrong person to say that, because I serve on too many committees already.
And this is what my intention when I moved this ordinance with this change is because I know that the relationship between the two committees, so I am surprised too that they don't want to be part of this committee, so, okay, Jay.
Who is this, who is the staff contact for TTC and Bicycle and Ped Commission? Are they the same person, or it's two different people?
Ross Kaler.
Mike, if that is.
Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, go ahead.
Ross Kaler, the Transportation Engineer, is the staff contact for TTC and Phil Groupie, Sustainability, yeah. And so, Joe, was there anybody at your Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission meeting who expressed any interest in being on the TTC as well?
I didn't hear that come to the surface. Again, I was, I, boy, I think I was the only one that voted, voiced support for that representative, and the other members did not.
I looked at the minutes, and there was one person on the Bike Committee that was not present at the meeting. So there's one voice not present.
Okay, Jay.
Well, here's another idea. When do these committees meet? I mean, could we move them to the same night so that one, so that one person wouldn't have, you know, a two-night commitment, they could just go from one committee to the other? If there was such a person who was willing to do that? We could explore that.
I, just to add, I do think, while it is ideal to have someone from the Bike and Pedestrian Commission, because I, I agree, like, the road should be shared with bicyclists and pedestrians, I also want to be super respectful of the time commitment that we're asking citizens to make. Like, twice a month is a thing. And if these people have health issues or other commitments, I don't want to discourage community members from being involved. And so I personally am okay with the idea that, like, I don't know that I feel comfortable telling someone they can't serve on this committee if one of them won't pony up to join another committee. If you're requiring it to be from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, that's essentially what you're saying, right? That someone on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee has to then agree to serve as the TTC, right? So that's what we're telling the members of that committee, like, hey, we need one of you to sign up for two committees, essentially, which to me just makes it a little hard when, I think we all understand here, the commitment it takes and the time it takes away from families and work and things. So I kind of, I kind of like the option to say, if someone from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee can't come and can't commit consistently, that they appoint someone, and they would appoint someone with the same values that, and interests that they have. But maybe that's oversimplifying.
Gabriela?
Just speaking as someone that's on the PLAN Commission, like, we, so we have two members of the PLAN Commission that serve on different committees. We have me, I serve on TTC, and then we have Shelley, who serves on Ag and Rural Affairs and PLAN. And so, and PLAN Commission meetings are long, like, very long. So adding a second one is obviously not difficult, but I do think that collaboration is really important. I think having the Ag and Rural Affairs rep explaining what happened in Ag and Rural Affairs is really important to some of the conversations we have. TTC is a little bit less relevant, I would say, in terms of the overlap, but still, like, me being able, it's more about me being able to communicate what's happening in PLAN Commission to the TTC, because like, they need to know what the development plans are for the city. So while I respect that people might not want to serve on two, at the same time, I just, I think that collaboration is important. And I think that, I just don't know that we can compel somebody to force them to do it. So I guess, is there a way for us to make it that if nobody is willing to serve, we can appoint a citizen in there instead? I don't know if that's possible in the ordinance.
I think the way the amendment is written does allow that flexibility, because it does say five citizens and removes a requirement that one of them would be a member of the Bike and Pedestrian Commission. Of course, the mayor could speak with each of the Bike and Pedestrian Commission members before making a recommendation to determine what level of interest they may have or ability they may have to serve on the TTC. So I think this option does exist as the amendment is written, and then, of course, if somebody from the Bike and Ped Commission is unable or unwilling to serve on TTC, then the mayor could move forward another citizen representative.
So you're talking about the original or the amended version?
The amended version, the amended version.
Can you remind me how many meetings each committee has per year?
I believe TTC has 10 meetings per year, and the Bike Commission, there's a forthcoming amendment, if it hasn't already been passed, that would move it to eight this year, and then, obviously, through the operating budget process, you'd want to consider maintaining the eight.
Okay, so there, okay, yes.
So at our TTC meetings, when we've discussed this, we've, you know, the idea that collaboration is a good thing, we, you know, we value that, and I believe that same topic of discussion was had at the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. So I think there's general agreement among both groups that we need to collaborate. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but, and I think there was discussion at the Bike and Ped Commission meeting that they wanted, you know, more involvement from Ross Kaler in particular, if we didn't have the crossover between the two commissions. So I think general consensus from both groups is that it would be ideal to have someone from the Bike and Ped Commission on TTC. But I don't know that anybody in particular wanted to be that person. Is that right, Joe?
This one is an issue, but I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it sounded like. I think more philosophically, the question was whether or not, like, it should be a requirement if, and if it's not able to happen, it shouldn't be something that's kind of set in stone and inflexible.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, so I guess, I mean, I understand we're voting on the amendment, but like, I wonder, like, I know you understand what we said is that the amendment allows us to theoretically appoint someone that's on the Bike and Ped Committee informally to the TTC, because that wouldn't be part of ordinances. But I wonder if you could do it the other way around, like, have this ordinance pass, but add some sort of stipulation that if nobody on the Bike and Ped Committee is willing to serve, that we can appoint a citizen in their, in their stead? Maybe that's not possible in the ordinance language, but.
I have an, I have an idea.
Oh, my God, what?
Well, you know, you should be respectful toward members of the council, but what I would suggest-
I think we are talking too much about this.
What I would suggest is passing this Board of Public Works amendment and amending it with just one sentence that says, "It is preferred that one of the members of the Transportation and Transit Commission come from the Bicycle and Ped Commission." I think that, I think putting it that way is better than putting it, saying that it's, it should be a member of the Bike and Ped Commission, and then if we can't find somebody, let's, let's find some other member.
Okay, Gabriela?
That would be fine by me. I don't know if you amend the amendment or if we-
Yeah, I think we amend it. We amend the amendment from Board of Public Works and just put in a sentence that says, "It is preferred that a member of Bicycle and Ped Commission be appointed to the Transportation and Transit Commission."
Second.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor as?
Of the amendment.
Oh, the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
In your post, the amendment passes.
Then we have to vote on another amendment.
Okay, so now we are, what is the other amendment?
The Board of Public Works amendment that we just amended.
Okay, so now I need a motion to approve the, what is?
Just a vote.
Just a vote.
Just a vote, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
In your post, the motion carried. Okay, thank you.
Now we have to vote on the-
The main motion.
So.
Inception.
Yeah.
So now, so now I need a motion to approve, what were we approving? The amendment to the amendment to the-
Newly amended or approved?
Okay, a motion to approve as amended.
Moved.
No, that motion was already on the floor. We just have to vote.
Just a vote, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
In your post, the motion carried.
There, we got through it.
Oh, my Lord, please don't make those amendments. Seda, next one, we have Seda.
Seda has not met in a while, but we will be having a meeting later this month.
Okay, thank you. Ag and Rural Affairs Committee?
We have not met, I actually did not check before this meeting, if we have a meeting on the books.
I think it's next week, before PLAN Commission?
Great.
Okay.
It is next week.
Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
So we had our first meeting as a combined committee. We welcomed our newest member, Jim Dunham, and it was a productive meeting. I think you heard some of the things we discussed in this last amendment, but no updates other than that. Our next meeting's in August.
Okay, thank you. Did you discuss the Bike and Pedestrian Plan?
We foreshadowed it, but no action was taken.
Okay. EMS, Jim is not here. Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
Yeah, the committee heard the presentations from the 2023 grant program recipients who presented what they did and how it went, and sounded like everything went well. We also got a report from Deanna about the Community Development Specialist, the hiring process, and she gave us an update on the hub and the teen center feasibility study, and please don't forget the meeting on Monday about the public workshop for the teen center from 5:00 PM till 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Housing Advisory Committee?
We met yesterday and had a couple of really interesting presentations. The first was Olivia Perry, who was one of the planners for Dane County, and she's been leading the Dane County Regional Housing Strategy effort. And as you may have heard, and if not, you've got a packet in the mail tonight with the executive summary of the roadmap to solving Dane County housing crisis. This is the executive summary, there's a bigger report, but this is available online for anybody that wants to read it, rhs.danecounty.gov. So she presented just a really, really brief overview of the, the history of the effort, what the main findings were, and like, what the, what the next steps are. And Dane County's gonna put a lot of resources into providing, well, she's, they're gonna put a lot of money into providing resources for municipalities to make a difference, but then also coordinating with other nonprofits, academia, private corporations to try to address this housing crisis from all different angles. I am actually, I've invited Olivia to come and present at a COW meeting, so we can have a conversation as a council. But I wanted to preview, I guess, a couple of action items. These are just examples of potential action items that municipalities can take to improve housing in the region. Increase investment to expand housing options. Update zoning codes to eliminate setbacks, reduce parking, and minimize lot sizes, as a few examples of that. Update TIF policies to support more diverse housing options, including affordable housing. Advocate for local bond financing. Expand training around racial disparities in housing and homeownership and work to address it. Support acquisition and rehab to preserve existing affordable housing. Provide training and homeownership, around homeownership to current residents, and land banking. Now, there are other options, but these are just some of the ones that she highlighted as relevant to Fitchburg. And I would like us to have, I think we should have a conversation as a council about how to incorporate some of those ideas going forward. We had a good conversation about that. Next, the second presentation was Hillary Parker from Habitat for Humanity of Dane County came and gave a presentation about, an update about Habitat locally and what they're working on Habitat programs. They gave an update about what has happened in Fitchburg specifically in the past. So in Fitchburg, there were 36 homes built between 2008 and 2021. 143 people, including 85 children, live in those homes. And the incomes ranged from, basically, it was $35,000 to $75,000 in income for a family of four averaged. So Habitat serves 30% to 60% of average medium income. And then also talked about potential ways that Fitchburg can collaborate. There's been no movement on that since the last development, which was Renaissance on the Park. And we had some questions and answers related to that. And that is the summary.
Thank you. Landmark Preservation Commission. Jay?
Oh, we haven't had a meeting in God knows how long.
Are you planning to have one?
I don't have a plan to, but I think I'm gonna talk to the chair, the current chair, sometime in the next few weeks.
Okay. The Tree Advisory Committee?
We have a meeting this Thursday at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. We don't have any report from other commission and committees, and then we move to standing committee, yeah?
Before we move on from that, what is going on with your, the ad hoc, the ad hoc committee that you're working on?
Oh, yeah, so that one is, the first meeting is next week, June 20th, and we have 10 people.
Excellent.
Yeah, 10 people, and then, so there is an agenda, they are, they're already drafted and they're sent it to the members, so, yeah, so it's coming. Thank you for asking. So next, we move to the standing committees and reports. We are starting with Finance Committee.
So a couple of announce, a report before we move on to the resolutions. An announcement for the council on, we have a special finance meeting on June 24th, that's the Monday before the next council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM, and these are the CIP presentations from the departments. So there's no votes, but it's a really, really great way to find out why the CIP was put together the way it was. Highly, highly recommend that people come and attend, or at minimum, watch the recording at a later date, because it's a really important context for the CIP. So again, that's Monday, June 24th, starting at 6:00 PM. Second, just a note that the budget process has begun with department worksheets that have gone out, so that is underway. And I'm sure the mayor will talk about the CIP, because that also came out. And I'll move to the resolutions. I move approval of Resolution R 10624, amending the 2024 general fund budget for fire department battalion chief. Finance approved.
Thank you. So do you want to?
Yeah, I can give a quick summary.
And then the chief is gonna-
Yeah, so a retirement of a paid-on-call that has been doing a lot of the work of the, of this, of this officer-in-charge position, retired. And so staff, there was already a previous retirement from last year for a similar position that has created some stress on the department. With one person retiring, there was able, inability in the department to fill those hours amongst the full-time staff, but with the second departure, there's just no way that the, that they can have enough officers-in-charge to, to do the work. So there's the recommended, recommendation to do a full-time hire. In order to do this, there is a mix of funding through that firefighter position that we approved last year, and some overtime that we anticipate not having to pay for, because we'll have a new full-time person doing this. And I did also want to acknowledge that, that we still have two paid-on-call staff that are doing this officer-in-charge work, and they have, they put in a lot of effort for the city for very little pay. So we thank the people that have both retired for doing that work, and also the people that, that are still there doing those types of positions. And I'll let the chief, if he wants to add anything else.
So just to clarify, one retired back in 2021. The other one notified us at the end of last year that they will be retiring in the middle of next year. Both positions have worked well over a shift-working, full-time position. Shift-working, full-time position is 2,496 hours annually. The one, our deputy chief, POX deputy chief that retired was working over 2,900 hours annually, and then the one that will, will be retiring in the middle of next year is working around 2,500 hours annually. So that's on top of their already full-time jobs. So we're just planning for that vacancy with the upcoming retirement in the middle of next year.
Yes. Chief, is this the item you also brought to the Personnel Committee to, to approve this new position? I just want to highlight that it came to that committee. I don't see it- I just want to highlight that it came to that committee. I don't see it on the agenda, but it did also come to Personnel, and we very much approved and supported this.
Okay.
So I'll just clarify that the position classification was what was approved at Personnel. And then this obviously would be the actual budget amendment to hire.
The hiring of it, okay. Thank you, thank you.
The position, yes.
Jay.
Can you just run down quickly, what is the difference between the paid-on-call deputy chief, the paid-on-call division chief, and the battalion chief position that you're looking for?
Right. So when our paid-on-call deputy chief retired, that position doesn't exist anymore. That, we were able to hire another full-time deputy chief. So there's two of us that are deputy chiefs currently. Now we move to the POX Division Chief. We currently have the two POX Division Chiefs that are currently working. Like I said, the one is scheduled to retire middle of next year. We still have our other POX Division Chief. He's working, on average, a little over 1,800 hours annually. And that's as much as he has stated that he's going to be able to give for the department because he also has family and a full-time job. And then comes to the Battalion Chiefs. Those will be the full-time positions. A Battalion Chief will be in charge of each shift, so we have three shifts, A, B, and C. Each of those Battalion Chiefs will be responsible for their respective shifts.
How many of those do we currently have?
Zero right now. That's what we're working towards. So we currently, one of our, my fellow full-time deputy chief is looking and willing to take essentially voluntary demotion from deputy chief down to battalion chief. So essentially, what would happen is we would reorganize our command structure to have a fire chief, a deputy chief, only one. And then we'd have the battalion chiefs under there along with the remaining Division Chief, POX, and then our Division Chief of Prevention Inspection.
Is it anticipated that you would be hiring another paid-on-call Division Chief?
No.
Okay.
We just don't have anybody on current staff to promote up into that position. And right now with, you know, just trying to hire POX firefighters, we've always been down in numbers on POX firefighters. And right now, actually, we have interviewed candidates, but we've put that on hold to make sure that this adjustment within the budget covers the Battalion Chief positions, but also make sure that we're able to support our POX staff.
Okay, so all of this, there's not really, there's not any additional money that's being requested. This is just shifting money from the approved budget around.
Correct.
Okay.
So this is why we don't need to vote. Okay. Any other questions, comment? All those in favor, Resolution R-10624, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I move approval of Resolution R-11524, amending the 2024 fee schedule for firework license fees.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Public Safety approved.
Okay, so who is going to explain that?
Yeah, so I'll kind of give a summary. This was updated, the fee schedule's always updated in the budget. So the fireworks fee was originally $30. It was updated to $5,000 after a conversation with the council. We, the city staff does not believe that 5,000 is justifiable and decided, recommended that we change it to $500 as it is more appropriate. And the reason why 5,000 is not reasonable is because we are bound by state statute to keep it a reasonable cost, and we don't feel like we can justify that at this point. That being said, we know that there were a lot of issues last year that required a lot of parks' maintenance time to clean up. So we know that there is real cost to staff. So in addition to working on education around this to try to prevent those issues in the future, we're going to be tracking costs closely to see how much it actually costs staff to deal with these types of issues. And if it's more than $500, you know, in fees, we may increase that at a future year when we have more justification to do so. And just for reference, there are a couple of vendors every year for fireworks in Fitchburg. Often, there's one off of Verona Road and off of Fish Hatchery.
Okay, chief, do you want to add anything else to this?
Actually, I'm going to refer to Mr. Brecklin because this was actually brought up by current administration in the Fire Department. And I know that Chad was involved in that discussion, so he has more knowledge of it than I do.
Okay.
Yeah, Elder Gerhardt has summed it up well. When looking, this fee had originally been $30. And when the conversation first started among staff, the fee amount was placed at 5,000 and then inadvertently put into the fee schedule that way. So we need this resolution in order to update the fee schedule appropriately to reflect the $500, which we believe we can better justify.
Do we add an extra zero or plus 5,000?
I think it was just put in there as 5,000, and it was not caught when the budget went to the council.
Okay, any comments, question? No? All those in favor of Resolution R-11524, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next one.
I move approval of Resolution R-11624, approving the collateral assignment of development agreement.
Second.
And Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this?
So this is a development agreement, a TIF assistance agreement for Arlo Apartments. And as you know, we do pay-go for our TIF incentives for developers. And so it's time for them to make a, or to get some reimbursement because they met their targets. And so they requesting that rather than pay, that money go to Arlo Apartments. They request that it goes directly to Bank of Sun Prairie, who is funding that development. So just to kind of eliminate the pass-through. This is not an unusual thing that happens from time to time.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just another one of those things where what's on the agenda tells you absolutely nothing useful. So I would prefer if it would have said the developer, Development Agreement Regarding Arlo Apartments or something to that effect. Because, you know, our agendas are supposed to be giving people notice of stuff that's happening, and what's on there doesn't.
So what?
It's, I'm not asking for any action by the council. It's just something that I would like staff to work on, being more clear in the titles of these things.
Oh, I know what you said, the title. Okay, okay.
That's helpful clarifying the title. So yeah, we can look to do better.
Okay. Okay, any comments, question? All those in favor of Resolution R-11624, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So we are done with Finance, and then we move to Personnel Committee. Oh, Donald is not here, so.
We did not meet since the last meeting.
Okay, so, thank you. Then we move to Public Safety and Human Services.
On behalf of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, I would move approval of Ordinance 2024-013.
Second. Okay, did the Public Safety and Human Services approve?
You bet we did.
Okay. So can you explain what we are doing here?
Yeah, this is some legacy language in the ordinance that probably goes back to the '70s, maybe the '80s, where Public Safety, the Public Safety Committee had jurisdiction over all kinds of things, including the library and the senior center and all kinds of other things. And this is just kind of cleaning it up since we now have other committees that deal with those specific items. So they're being removed from the role, the Public Safety and Human Services Committee description.
Yeah, so this is what I, you know, I move forward with this. And what I try to do is to update the ordinance to reflect the current practices of our referrals. That's it. Okay, any other comment, question? Nope? All those in favor of Ordinance 2024-013, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So Item 9, unfinished business, we don't have anything, and then we move to new business. This is Finance Committee.
Yes, so I move approval of Resolution R-12024, amending the 2024 general fund budget for economic development workstations. And this is a direct referral.
Okay.
And Finance approved.
Okay.
And I can give a quick summary. So as you all know, we put in the budget last year for a new housing specialist. That person has now been hired and is going to start July 22nd, as Chad mentioned in his report. As a result of that new person, we need some new workstation. There is a space for them, but it's currently being used for a different use. So just updating that space to be appropriate for an employee. We are using the salary vacancy funding because that position was funded for the entirety of 2024. So we are basically using that cost to pay for the updated workstations.
Okay, Jay.
So this is about $10,000. And in the letter that's here, it sounds like this is only covering furniture and I don't know what enhancements are. I presume there's some kind of wiring or something that has to happen. Does this include whatever computer workstation this person will need, or?
So that would have been budgeted with the position, so that's already been included. So we don't need any sorts of amendments to do that.
Great.
Okay, any other comment, questions? Nope? All those in favor of Resolution R-12024, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. So we, so next we move to the Mayor's Report. So a couple of things that I want to mention. One is that, you know, the CIP is out. So the next public hearing is going to be on June 25th. And then the Alders have until, what is that? July 5th to bring amendment to the CIP, okay? And then the next public hearing for the CIP and final approval will be Tuesday, July 23rd, okay? So the CIP that I am bringing forward is, I would say mostly of the project are from last year, okay? Like I would say, 90%. There are a couple of new projects that I am moving forward. I'm going to explain that on the meeting, June 24. I'm going to do, I'm going to explain to you which are those projects. There are a couple of projects that I changed the funding sources. And then the other thing is, some of the departments ask for new equipment or new small equipment. But since we didn't have capacity in the 2025, you know, 26, I had to make the decision that some of those small equipment vehicles, I didn't put it in the CIP. Remember that every asset that we incorporate in our CIP or infrastructure budget, so that people understand what is a CIP, now we have a replacement fund. So I will recommend all of you to read my letter that I put together. So there are some of my priority and what are the things we did to make this, the CIP for '25 and '26 to balance, okay? So, but then I'm going to explain more about what were the priorities that I am bringing forward and the new project that I am bringing forward to the CIP. So that one is, so I will recommend especially to the new Alders to attend that meeting. So it's going to save you a lot of time than reading the whole package. The other thing I want to mention with you is, oh, did you bring that?
I'll be happy to grab some.
Okay. The other thing is, we are, you know, we continue doing the survey, and we have a couple of postcards in English and in Spanish that we are distributing to several businesses. And we are doing some pop, what is it, pop market? Event. We are going to be in the farming market tomorrow night in the Southdale Park. And then I will need some volunteer for next Monday for the first concert at Mackey Farm Park. We are going to have a booth, and we're going to have plenty of this, you know, to distribute. So you can help me on Monday. What time is it, 6 o'clock? The concert? I don't know, 6:30?
It is, but we're still working on the details.
On the details? Okay.
But definitely will be literature available.
Yeah, but I will need some volunteer to help me to distribute this. So people maybe in the park can take a picture of that, key or code, and then can do it. They're, you know, it takes five minutes to do this, okay? So you can help us to distribute that. We have plenty of postcards that Chad is going to share with you. The other thing that Chad already explained, we have a couple of ribbon cutting coming this week. I cannot attend the one on Friday, so Gabriela is going to represent me for, what is it? Bonbon, wait, wait, yeah, okay. The other thing I have been done last week, one of the things I am doing and I am meeting with some of the CEO of our more, you know, the biggest business here in the city in one-to-one meeting, and last week, we met with the CEO of Parbank and also with Serco. It was a great conversation because, you know, one of my, as a mayor, one of my, in my platform was not only to attract new business, but also to retain our biggest employer in the city. And so this is what I am meeting with them to determine what are the needs, what are the things that they are doing, if they are planning to expansion, why they are still in Fitchburg. You know, so, and so they can understand that we are partners with them, you know. We are very happy that they are staying in Fitchburg, how we can help them to succeed and to thrive. So the other thing I want to mention, there are a couple of, also a focus group here coming at the end for the strategic planning. I will ask you please to, if you can connect with your constituents and motivate them to participate. There are two on June 26th and 27th. One is in the, what is it, Doge Church, Industry 3. And the other one is, I don't remember where the other one is, okay? But yeah. The other thing I want to ask you, to invite you to the race of the flag, the Juneteenth flag on June 18th, next week, at 12:00, if you can come to the City Hall. What else? And that's it for now. What is?
June 27th is at Hugo James Shelter.
Okay, June 27th at?
Hugo James Shelter.
Hugo James Shelter. What time? Is that it?
One is at 6:00 PM and the other is at 7:30 PM.
So if you can also invite your neighbors to participate in this focus group. What else? That's it for me. Okay. Oh, and we are starting working with, what is it, the budget. We finished with the CIP and then we're moving with the CIP budget. Okay, so now we are going to Alder District, and I will start with District 1.
We're working on, we're working on the community action forums for traffic calming evaluation on King James, Lower King James Way and Williamsburg Way. We've been working with the neighbors on that recently. The other thing I'd add, the Allied Neighborhood, there's been, they have a summer program. It's run by Madison Parks, but they had, it was last night, and there's food, there's music. I met a lot, there were a lot of Fitchburg residents there. And they'll be having the same thing again in Monday, not next week, but the following week. So I just like mentioned, it's a nice, nice event. If I could mention to you, Chad, the mass and police are very present there, you know, meeting the people. And if we could, if you'd put that on the calendar or see if our officers could be there too, I think it'd be, it'd be nice. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Sure, so folks that live on the Dunn Marsh neighborhood know there's been a road closure. So I just want to thank the city staff for being so responsive to different residents who've, you know, had issues with the traffic closures and kind of promptly put up signs and redirected traffic. So I just wanted to show my gratitude to our staff for being able to cover that and other folks that mentioned. But there is a public workshop for the teen center on Monday at the Latino Chamber of Commerce in the evening.
Okay, thank you. District 2.
Yeah, we met with the residents of Pembroke Drive on May 30th to talk about the traffic crash that happened there. And Gabrielle, maybe, is going to? crash that happened there, and Gabrielle maybe is going to have a few more things to say in a few moments here. I attended one of the strategic plan focus group meetings on Tuesday, June 4th. Alder Herbst was there with us. As has been mentioned, on Monday, the 17th, is the focus group for the teen center, but it's also the first concert at McKee, so you can go from one to the other. And a reminder again, tomorrow night at the library is the EV 101 educational class, so there will be, MG&E will be presenting, and there will be, I don't know, a dozen or so residents with their electric cars, so you can ask questions.
Oh, you can bring your electric car?
Yes.
Oh.
In fact, I think one of the city's F-150 Lightnings will be there as well.
I heard Gabriella was going to bring hers and let anyone drive it.
They wanted.
Isn't that what you said? I'm sure you said that.
Okay, thank you, Gabriel.
A couple of things, I guess just to note that the hub bids went out, was referred out today at the council meeting, so hopefully that hub park up in North Fish Hatchery Road will be moving forward soon. So just wanted to flag that for the council and for the residents. Another, in addition to the McKee Park, the first concerts at McKee being next week, a couple of things happening in McKee Park. The tennis courts are still under construction, but there was a save the date for ribbon cutting on August 21st, so I assume that's the, we will plan to have them open at that date or before then, so we can look forward to having some time on those courts before the end of the year. Also, that Ninja course, that, it's like, I think it's fully operational, so if anyone wants to attempt to, as average people probably can't do much, but I think some people will have a lot of fun with it.
I tried, I could.
Hopefully some kids. Yeah, it's not, it's not easy stuff, so enjoy trying that out or, you know, sending your kids through it. And, oh, and the splash pads open. Really, really fun to see all the kids playing and having fun. And I also, I saw a couple of snapping turtles on the roads when I was walking around the park. So keep an eye out when you're walking on those trails and give them a wide berth, but it was nice to see a couple of other additional residents of Pittsburgh enjoying the park. And then, again, following up on Bill's statement, we did meet with the Pembroke Drive neighbors, and I'll just like note for the council, the Pembroke Drive went through the neighborhood traffic management process, and they, they basically were qualified for phase one but did not meet the criteria for phase two. So we are going to look at potentially putting one of those speed feedback signs on Pembroke, which is a phase one treatment, but part of the conversation yesterday, in addition to talking about the crash, was, or not yesterday, but with that, we had that meeting, in addition to talking about the crash, we also talked about the results of the study and talked about why, the rationale behind why certain things qualify and don't, which is a challenging conversation, you know, when people want to make changes to their neighborhood, that can be really tough. So in the speed feedback sign, it's pretty impressive, the results show that it dropped the average, the 85th percentile speed by almost 10 miles per hour, brought it down to what the actual speed limit is, around 25 miles per hour. So just kind of additional information that those speed feedback signs have a real impact on traffic safety. But I, we have these neighborhoods without sidewalks and really wide roads, and we just have these neighborhoods that are just, without sidewalks, they're not truly safe because people are walking on the streets. So one of the, the president of the Wildhood Neighborhood Association, Sue Easterday, who's also on the Osmenton Road Traffic Calming Committee, and they have reached phase two of the process, right? She kind of talked a little bit about encouraging people to walk in the right-of-way, because people's, it's not all people's yards, like there's a whole setback beyond the curb that's city property even though people have it in their yards. So walk in the right-of-way, you know, put visible vests and lights on when you're walking in the evening hours or in dusk hours. And so that, you know, it's not a perfect solution, but there are opportunities to improve the safety, and hopefully we can move towards potential solutions in the future. But we are very limited in putting sidewalks in, if that is a mitigation that people are interested in, which it sounds like there's mixed feelings about, at least in that neighborhood. Yeah, and I guess I just will say that we should think about, as we go through this net media traffic management process, for neighborhoods that don't qualify for the next phase, we should think about having some sort of neighborhood meeting where we talk about why and give them a chance to say their piece, because I think it's really important that we do that complete follow-through, because I think part of the converse, part of the confusion on Pembroke Drive was not getting that, that final follow-up after the results came back in that regard, so. But those CP feedback signs are here, and I, we got received an email from Ross about putting them in District 2, and I assume everyone else has it as well, so those should be going out soon, which is great. That's all. Thanks.
You. District 3.
Yeah. We have a lot of things happening. Coming up on Thursday, between 5:00 and 7:00 PM, we're having a resource fair, a Southdale Park Resource Fair, that's being kind of headed up by the River Food Pantry, but they've got a large number of service organizations that are going to be there, including the Pittsburgh Fire Department, Parks and Recreation, Police Department, Library. JFF is going to be there, and Boys and Girls Club, and Briar Patch. I mean, just, it's going to be a good event for that neighborhood. And the Flyers went up some time ago, so hopefully there'll be a big turnout. Also, a few years ago, the city increased the size of the community garden area in Swan Creek, but there was only one water tap, which was at one end, and the, the community garden area was expanded the other direction. So it's a long, long way from the water tap to the other side where people need to water their gardens. So we've been, this is something that's been kind of in the queue for a while to add a second water tap at the other end, and that's going to be going in in the next couple of weeks. And then, as some of you know, I serve as the, one of the Dane County representatives to the South Central Wisconsin Rail Transit Commission, and to my stunned amazement, I was elected vice chair this week, or last week. So if you have any questions about the rail lines or the Rails to Trails program, let me know.
I didn't know. Good to know. Okay, thank you. Nicole?
Yeah, so in District 4, a couple updates. As Alder Gerhardt mentioned, Osmenton is in phase two of TCC, and I believe surveys are going out soon. I think, I don't think they've gone out quite yet. I just want to give kudos to Ross Kahler. He put together, and based on feedback from the really awesome committee that has been put together, there are two separate surveys, because Osmenton is a really long road, and people are experiencing different speeds and different issues at different times. And I think pretty solidly that every neighbor is against sidewalks at that point. So that's the one thing everyone on Osmenton could pretty universally agree on. But yeah, I appreciate just the attention to detail there, so that should be coming out rather soon. And then the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan will have a work session Monday, June 24th at 5:00 PM in the Janine Ceiling Room here. I unfortunately will not be able to make much of it, because we have the finance meeting at 6, and I really want to attend that as a newer alter. But just encouraging anyone who wants to kind of be a part of that, that is happening here as well. And then the last update, I had the pleasure of attending the Verona Area School District High School graduation. So as a district that has students in all three of our school districts, just want to say congratulations to Verona, Oregon, and Madison High School graduates, and to all of their families and friends who supported them.
Thank you.
You said that Greenfield meeting was at 5:00?
5:30.
5:30.
Yep. On June 24th.
Okay. Thank you for all the reports. Announcement, our next common council meeting will be June 25.
And can I make an announcement as well?
Yeah.
I just wanted to give you a preview of the committee, the whole meeting coming up on June 26th, which is after the next council meeting. The tentative plan, we haven't finalized it, but this is pretty final. The tentative plan is to discuss the financial management plan, which will be a presentation by Ellers after the CIP. It's actually based on the proposed CIP, but that helps inform the budget going down the line. It's something we do every year, but it's a really great presentation, so that'll be first. And then we also are going to talk about a shared development priority discussion between the city, the Village of Oregon and South Fitchburg, Fitchburg, but in the south of Fitchburg. So Chad will kind of give you some insight into some conversations that are happening behind the scenes, and that will be all in the goals for an hour and a half meeting, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Jay?
Yeah, I just, I was going to mention this earlier. I apologize that I was not able to be at the last council meeting, because I wanted to say this at that time, but our, our recent bond issue, we were issued a AAA rating. And when I first got elected to the council, our rating was in, I think it was an ABB. We were, we were very, very low, and Doug Morissette made the decision to bring in Ellers and Associates to create the financial management plan that we are still using today, almost 30 years later. There have been some tweaks to it, but that plan has served us so well and gotten us to this point that I wasn't sure we would ever get to, because we kept being told that, you know, you don't, you just don't have enough valuation in the city, but here we are. So to all of the council members who have served since 1993, and to the mayors and administrators and finance directors who have worked so hard on keeping our city solvent and moving forward with that plan and getting us to the point where we can be a AAA rated city, this is quite an accomplishment, and we should be very proud of the work that we've done. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that work and hope that we continue it.
Thank you. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourning at 9:14. Thank you very much. Wesnas Noches.